The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 23rd, 2021 Westminster City Council meeting. As of June 14th, the city has resumed meeting in person for city council meetings with the option for virtual participation by council and staff as necessary. In addition to in-person attendance, the community may also participate remotely by watching the live stream on the city YouTube channel or by dialing in by phone with the instructions on the meeting agenda webpage. We continue to support multiple opportunities for public comment, including in-person testimony, email, voicemail, and live remote audio. Many modifications have been made to council chambers for the safety of council and staff. This includes spacing council on the dais and limiting the number of staff participating in person. The Agenda section of the city website is the best place to check for details on participating in council meetings, and the web address is www.cityofwestminster.us/Agendas. I now ask each of you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, we comply with the United States of America, to the Republic which stands by nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We also gently remind you to please silence your cellphones before we start. I'm going to ask City Clerk Parker to please lead us in a roll call vote.
A roll call vote, a roll call.
I'll take the roll call. Mayor Pro Tem DeMonte.
Present.
Mayor Sights.
Here.
Counselor Seymour.
Here.
Counselor Scully.
Here.
Counselor Smith.
Present.
And Counselor Bowles.
Here.
The next item before us is the consideration of the minutes of the preceding meeting. Is there a motion? Counselor Seymour.
Thank you. I move to approve the minutes of the August 9th, 2021 meeting as presented.
Counselor Smith.
A second.
There's a motion and a second. This is a voice vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The minutes are approved. Next, we have presentations. Mayor Pro Tem DeMonte is going to proclaim today, or September 6th through September 10th, as City of Westminster Employee Appreciation Week. Mayor Pro Tem DeMonte. There's a question. Is there anyone here to accept it tonight? And I believe there is. I see Ms. Christman. Actually, you're fortunate. You have a large crew to come receive this.
Before we get started, can I have, I don't know how you want to introduce, because will the House might pick them up if they introduce? Or they need this?
Lisa Christman, Human Resources.
Nikki Leo, Human Resources.
Willie O, Parks Department.
Molly Tayer, Economic Development.
Dave Gorman, Community Development.
Veronica Smith, Library.
Brian Poltenklas, General Services.
All right, so we're very well represented tonight. So first, I'd say from myself and the rest of council that we very much appreciate all that you guys do for the city, as well as I know the residents do. So I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas Westminster citizens have given the city a very high service ratings each of the past citizen surveys attesting to the high quality of services provided by the Westminster employees, and whereas Westminster employees are in large part responsible for the city's national and regional reputation for quality, progressive municipal government, and whereas the 1,027 full-time and part-time benefited employees and over 826 seasonal and non-benefited employees have contributed significantly to the quality of life of Westminster citizens, and whereas these employees who are employed in the city attorney's office, the city manager's office, community development, economic development, finance, fire, general services, human services, information technology, parks, recreation and libraries, police, policy and budget, and the public works and utility departments comprise workforce that is unquestionably one of the city's most valuable resources, and whereas September 9th, 2021, the employee barbecue lunch will be held at Westfield Village Park in effort to recognize all city employees and to enjoy the company and friendship of coworkers, and whereas the week of September 6th, 2021, will include several other activities designed to express appreciation to city employees. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Anita Sights of the City of Westminster, Colorado, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim September 6th through the 10th, 2021, as City Westminster Employee Appreciation Week, signed this 23rd of August, 2021. Mayor Anita Sights. We appreciate it.
Is there someone from staff that would like to take a picture? Looks like we have Deputy City Manager Opie on the case. Thank you all. We really appreciate you all. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the public comment portion of the meeting. This is an opportunity for the public to communicate with the city council on any topic they choose unless there is a topic for which a public hearing is also scheduled. There are now four methods, I'm sorry, the current public comment portion of the meeting is not intended to be conversational, but rather a direct communication from the public to their representatives. There are now four methods available for participation in public comment. You may testify in person, submit written email testimony, record a voicemail to be played back during the meeting, or request to speak live via the remote meeting link through the city clerk's office. Please see the posted agenda for details on how to participate using any of the methods available. I would also remind the audience that we do not allow the use of recording devices or visual aids during public comments in person. At this time, I would ask the city clerk to please summarize the number of participants this evening and introduce our first speaker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This evening, we have one person who has signed up to speak live in person, who is here in chambers, Patrick Tennyson. If you are ready, you may approach the podium. And you have five minutes. Give me just one second to make sure your mic is on. All right, and you will have five minutes to just counsel.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and council. It's great to be here. My name is Patrick Tennyson. I'm the president and CEO at Butterfly Pavilion here in Westminster. And I just wanted to come this evening and just give you an update of what's going on over at Butterfly Pavilion. It's been over a year since I've had an opportunity to talk with COVID, and I talked with you since COVID, and we wanted, I just wanted to make sure that you knew what was up and how things were going. Of course, Mayor Pro Tem DeMonte is a wonderful board member here at Butterfly Pavilion and does a great job, and I hope he's keeping you updated. But if not, I still feel obligated to be here and to chat with you once in a while. So thank you for having me this evening. I wanted to let you know, you know, during the COVID crisis, and I know we're still battling it, but the main throes of the crisis was very difficult. We had to close our doors, like most businesses in and around the Denver Metro area, in March, and stayed closed to June of 2020. Soon after that, we were able to get open, and we just owe so much to the City of Westminster and Jefferson County as a whole. Mr. Tripp was extremely beneficial and helpful to me during this difficult time, and of course, Jefferson County was instrumental in getting us back open. We worked really closely with Jefferson County, shoulder to shoulder, almost every day during that closure, and we were able to receive one of only a few, I believe it was under 20, site-specific variances to get reopened. And so we are very honored to be represented to the state of Colorado by Jefferson County. And once we were able to open up in a limited capacity, we stayed open for the entire time. We had some ups and downs and had to do some layoffs and, of course, do some other cutting back of salaries and things like that for all staff, but we made it through. And in May of 2021, we were able to open up full-time back to the public, and, boy, it was really excited, exciting and well-received. The community really came out in great number and supported Butterfly Pavilion. We had a line down the block to hold Rosie, if you can imagine. So it was very, very exciting, and from that point on, we've had outstanding, we've had outstanding support from the community. We've had some, the best June and best July in the history of Butterfly Pavilion. So we're very fortunate and very lucky to have the support of the community. And during that downtime, you know, the community really rallied behind Butterfly Pavilion and supported us philanthropically in a very meaningful way. So we are very fortunate and feel very lucky to be a part of Westminster and Jefferson County as a whole, and the entire community, and really believe that it's been a wonderful teamwork in getting the organization back on its feet and to get where we are today. So just wanted to provide you all that update, and thank you very much for all your support over the years. We feel very fortunate.
Mr. Tennyson, for the folks in the room, do you want to mention your upcoming gala? Or is it already sold out?
Oh, sure, yeah. We have an upcoming gala on October 1st. We will be inviting the public to come join us for a really wonderful evening. Really exciting this year. We have a Pulitzer Prize award-winning author coming to speak, Elizabeth Colbert, the author of The Sixth Extinction. She will be speaking about the importance of our work in curbing global loss of biodiversity. So it's a very exciting time for Butterfly Pavilion, and thank you, Mayor Sights, for mentioning that.
Mayor, there is one other public comment sign-up at this time. John Palmer, if you would like to approach the podium.
Counsel. Mayor Sights. It's your job as the mayor and your responsibility to keep the citizens of this city informed. That being said, it's been six weeks now since we've had officers put on administrative leave and yet to hear any comment of any type or any update from you. I believe the citizens are due an update this evening in regards to that. Secondly, I believe the citizens would also like an update on the police collective bargaining agreement. It's very crucial to what's going on right now in the city. Again, your responsibility. If not yours, it should be coming from the city manager's office and not the way it was done initially as a press release. It should have been a media release, or it should have been brought forth on July 12th at city council. People shouldn't hear about these things on the 10 o'clock news or read them in print. It's your job to keep the people informed.
Are there any other members in attendance tonight that would like to come forth for public comment, even if you haven't signed up? Seeing none, we're going to move on to the next item on our agenda, which is our comments from city officials. Mr. Tripp, do you have any comments?
Yes, Mayor. Camera on here and working. Good evening, Mayor Sights, Mayor Pro Tem DeMonte, members of council. The only thing I have tonight, during this part of the agenda, is an update that I've been giving you regularly on conversations regarding collective bargaining and the requests that we've had from the FOP to consider collective bargaining. On July 26th, you adopted a resolution, and you provided support and some direction that staff work with police department, police employees, really on the ground to discuss with them, you know, what are the issues in the police department that prompt their interest in collective bargaining? Myself and the chief, the acting chief, Howard, members of command staff, deputy Opie have been doing that. We've had a number of meetings, large and small vote, roll calls and separate meetings that include not just sworn officers, but the non-s sworn officers. And they've been really good meetings with open dialogue and lots of conversation. Those are ongoing. We have a, we've met, I believe, three times from now with the FOP, their president, vice president, and I'm prompted here that we're scheduled for tomorrow afternoon also to do an update. We are planning additional meetings and roll calls in the next several weeks, and that will be ongoing, gathering a lot of great information. Related to the investigation and work that's being done there, it'll be a few weeks before that's resolved. As you all know, the chief reports to me, as the employees of the department do, and it's my responsibility to look at that information and making a decision based on that information as to how we move forward, but that will be a while. The organization that we hired to do that work has, I believe, until late September, provided transcription of the interviews that they had during that time. So this is certainly a challenging time in the police department, but in all police departments, regional. We've had great feedback from police officers about, you know, what they see happening in other agencies that are helping retain, bring officers into their organizations. I think probably many of you, through your interactions with other elected officials, know that the problem of folks leaving the policing line of work and that discipline in a community is a challenge in every city, particularly in the front range. You probably have heard that. I talked to our city manager group regularly about this, and of course, we're all fighting for the same thing to maintain, our status with our officers. And I want to thank you for the work that you've done for many years to provide great wages and benefits. Our police department are among the highest paid in the area, including all the agencies, and, you know, by adopting the ability for those folks to join FPPA and supporting equipment needs that we've had, and adding police officers has been a big support. Having said that, though, there are some challenges that we are addressing herein within the police department, and I'll continue to report back to you and keep you posted. So thank you for the support for the July 26th resolution to encourage this kind of communication and support it, and continue to keep you posted. From time to time, you may hear also from Deputy Opie, because I want you to understand that she's very involved in this also. I really appreciate Chief Howard's support and help in taking this responsibility on this time. Actually, all of his command staff and the entire organization has been open to some great conversation. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Tripp. The next item are council comments. Do any of my colleagues have reports or comments for tonight's meeting? Counselor Scully.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I want to thank everyone who made public comments tonight. It's really important to have your voice heard, and so I appreciate people who take the time to come and speak to us, and thank you, City Manager Tripp, for your report tonight as well. Last Wednesday, I attended the Jefferson County Economic Development Council. They are currently merging with the West Metro Chamber, so they talked a little bit about that merger. They talked about their new Director of Industry, introduced a few other people from around the area that were new to the committee. We had a little presentation on the Foreign Trade Zone, and that the point of entry is through our Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport. And they had an economic development report. They have eight new prospects just in this last month, and they are now up to 72 businesses that are involved with them. So they are a growing industry, and they did do a fiscal report as well and went through some of their assets and their strong end to 2020 and are now working on the strong end of 2021. And then the other thing that I did last week was on Friday, the Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport Noise Roundtable had an opportunity to tour the airport. So I went out and had a little tour with the airport manager and some of the electeds from around the county or the area that serve on that board. It was a really good tour, and one of the things that I asked was if we, as a council, could maybe go out and have a tour of the airport, because I think it's a great learning opportunity, how the airport impacts us and how we impact the airport. So would love to see that maybe as something we could work out with our airport partners, and they said they would be very open to having our council come out and do a tour with them. And then, that's it. That's all I have.
Counselor Smith.
Thank you. I had an opportunity to attend the North Metro Arts Alliance last Thursday. They are looking for some volunteer, for some of their events coming up, so if you have any interest in volunteering, please reach out to me or to Parks and Rec's Rich Newman. He will be able to connect you with Metro, or, excuse me, North Metro Arts Alliance. The other two opportunities that I'd like to ask staff for, I listed a few questions before we get into our meeting. We'll address those as we get to the items, but there was one that was in the consent agenda that I'd just like to address. It was answered by staff, but just for transparency, going through that question is, there was a line item for fines in the revenue system, and it was my question as far as if we have eliminated our library fines, why are we still, why are we still collecting these library fines?
Did you not receive an answer to that, Counsel?
I did, but for transparency to the public who did not get the answer, I'd like it answered.
Then I'll ask either the CFO or Parks Recreation and Recreation Library's director to come on up and answer that. Come up to the mic. Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Tim Lockhart. I'm the Recreation Services Manager, actually filling in for Lance Johnson, who is the acting director. In fact, library fines were eliminated a couple of years ago. That line item is for lost material that staff are able to recover some of those costs, and so I believe the line item is just under $4,000. But those, the library fines are, in fact, have been eliminated as a few years ago, but it's more just the funds that are received for lost or damaged goods is what that is.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. The other question, Mr. Tripp, is I appreciate your update from the CBA discussions. I would like to have a formalized timeframe from you or your office of when you'll come back to city council on addressing it formally and when to make decisions.
City Manager Tripp.
I'm not, would you repeat the question? There were two items that I talked about this evening, collective bargaining. Which are you referring to?
The, it could be both, but I was specifically referring to the CBA.
Come back with?
With what direction as far as where are we going with the CBA? I know that you're having these conversations and you're gathering data. When will you formally come back to council and deliver informality of what you're hearing from?
You know, probably the best way to answer that is I believe that the work that we did in the fire department a couple of years ago, actually, four or five years ago now, it took about three months. Felt like at the end of three months, I was able to make it around enough. We've been around to most of the shifts, the roll calls, once, and were on a second rotation. and we're on a second rotation now. We're now going into some smaller meetings. And we're finding that the meetings, as large as they are, don't prompt as much one-on-small-group conversations as we like. And so we're starting those. And, you know, we'll be doing that through the fall. So we started this first of August or so, late July. I'm going to anticipate August and October, probably towards the end of this year.
Do you have any further comments or questions? Okay. Do any of my other colleagues have comments or questions? Counselor Vols, or I'm sorry, Mayor Protem Demont.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just since you're on the topic, I'm curious with the timeline of the end of the year. I know that you've shared some substantial movement and things that you're trying to do to retain and attract officers. And so if we had questions or feedback on what was sent out to us, would you prefer that just email? Or is that something that at some point we could talk through what was shared with us?
I would suggest, if you want to talk about it, we agendize it. And certainly in the moment, I'll answer whatever questions you might have. But if you want to send those in, we can do that. But if you'd like a conversation in the next few meetings with the chief and some of the command staff involved, which I would recommend. I think that would be, that'd be very appropriate, and we'd be happy to do that.
I appreciate that, and I appreciate all the work that you're putting into this and taking the time to hear from the entire department. With that said, I think that it would be appropriate to agendize it because there, you know, I'd like to have some conversation around what we saw. As well as I think it would be nice, especially if this is going to be a process that takes multiple months, maybe if we could just get a temperature update about what you're hearing in the meeting so that, you know, we kind of follow you along, your path in the process. And I think that was similar to what you did with the fire, just so that we were made aware, since that original ask was to the city council. This was the direction we took. I think it would be appropriate, and I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Counselor Vols.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Sykes, I think it's good when we have a chance to recognize our colleagues and our team members who have some form of achievement. And I want to say congratulations to our City Manager, Don Tripp, who was this year for 2021, the Board Member of the Year for CASA of Adams and Bruffel County. So congratulations, City Manager Tripp.
Counselor Seymour.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to recognize sad passing this last week before of a man that's endeared to the city in many different ways. Former police officer, 32-year veteran of the Westminster Police Department, Vaughn Pepper, passed. And I got to know Vaughn through the Chamber of Commerce. And after his time in the police department, he became quite the entrepreneur in Westminster, along with his wife Judy. And a very popular spot, Zoe's Coffee House, is a place to meet and greet. And it's the cheers of coffee in Westminster, because everybody knows your name there. And so Vaughn will be sadly missed, and his services are this Wednesday at 1:00 PM at Dry City Baptist. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments?
Okay. I very much appreciate Counselor Seymour recognizing the passing of Vaughn Pepper. I think most of us consider Zoe's a second office for city business. And I had the good fortune of meeting the Peppers and starting to go to Zoe's, actually before my eight years on council, the year they opened. When I was getting my master's, I spent quite a few hours being caffeinated in their establishment. Definitely very civically minded beyond his multiple decades of serving the city and our police department. They would have information on all of the council candidates. They would have pictures of city council in their establishment with our emails, because they wanted people to know how to get in touch with us. Really good people and a huge loss for the community. It is great to see so many people tonight. It's nice, we have, with COVID, you know, it's been a long time. So each meeting, we see some faces we haven't for a while. I do want to say thank you to Mr. Tennyson for coming and giving us an update on the Butterfly Pavilion. It's a true community asset. This weekend, a close friend told me her daughter just went to apply to be a volunteer at the Butterfly Pavilion. So, I mean, there's just so many different ways that you enrich the lives of our residents. And so it was wonderful to hear from you. And I know multiple members of council are excited to attend the gala. I do want to address and say thank you for the opportunity to maybe clear up some misunderstanding or misunder, misinformation about what my role is when it pertains to personnel matters or issues. For our charter, this body as council collectively has three employees. That is our city manager, our municipal judge, and our city attorney. And also by our charter, we are prohibited from getting involved with employment and personnel issues for anyone other than those three individuals. So as a body, we don't get involved in these conversations. We're not even aware of them. Rather, we get updates similar to what was released to you. And that's kind of the appropriate level. So I will not be speaking on behalf ever of any personal matters within the organization unless it is appropriate. Next, I want to go quickly through the meetings that I had last week. As many of you know, I am a board member for the Ralston House, and I do that in my personal capacity. But an issue came up that I do want to take the temperature of my colleague. There has been a rash of accidental shootings of children due to poor gun safety in the 1st and the 17th Judicial District. It is a significant uptick from years previous, enough to be a trend. And so there was some desire from the part of the Director of the Ralston House to perhaps do a campaign on gun storage safety. People can be gun enthusiasts, and that's great. This is not anti-gun, but really talking about the importance of securing your gun in a way that's appropriate. I communicated, I thought that this council would be very supportive of it. I will not, I guess, traumatize anyone with the stories that I, we heard, that they were horrific and chilling. And people's lives will be permanently altered with that type of loss, even responding to calls for that type of loss. It's very, very traumatic. So I'd love to hear from you. You can email if you feel like this is some, an endeavor we'd be interested in talking about. Next, we had the Public Health Call for Jefferson County Public Health, which occurred on Wednesday. And I believe some of you attended in addition to me. Then we had the Denver Regional Council of Governments on Wednesday evening. During that call, we went through kind of amendments to community outreach. Then we went through amendments to propose potential amendments for the tip cycle, just kind of small tweaks to improve the major amendments that had been made previously. And then there was a really great and comprehensive explanation of the greenhouse gas rulemaking that was just released last week. And so I can forward that on to all of you, both the video and the PowerPoint of that presentation. Definitely interesting and meaningful. I mean, it matches a lot of our goals as a community to pay attention to this. And so we'll see, again, this is trying to take 1261 and 260, and how do we actually hit those greenhouse gas reduction goals? Next, we, I had on Thursday, the Mile High Flood District Meeting. What a wonderful organization that makes huge public safety and public enjoyment, quality of life improvements throughout the front range, learning about different projects that we're going forward. And I do have to say thank you to our staff members who prepped me for that. It was my first really active attendance in a meeting like that. And quite a bit to learn and a very well-run board. And then Friday night, I had an unofficial gathering of the Northwest Mayors and Commissioners' man. And while at this kind of backyard barbecue gathering, I did ask about a couple of issues. Are you guys having street racing in your communities? Everyone is dealing with street racing, and it's a real issue. It's a real problem and actually creating some significant safety challenges. And then another question I asked, are you having difficulty recruiting and retaining police officers? And again, a resounding yes, that this is an issue all communities, I think, in the front range are facing and, you know, looking for ways to make sure we are protecting public safety, communicating the value and the appreciation for the job. And so it was, it was a good conversation. But to hear, to hear others are kind of dealing with the same things we are and wanting to do better. For a lot of folks, this was last week or the week before, was the first day of school for their kids getting back together and getting into those classrooms. And for a lot of kids, I don't think they've ever been so enthusiastic to be in the classroom setting. I know my children were particularly happy about it. And I would just ask each of us to do everything we can to ensure that they do not have interruptions in their school year, that our local businesses do not have interruptions to their livelihood, that we're good neighbors, that we are respectful of protecting each other. To me, that's public safety and community service is making sure we don't put a disproportionate risk to our neighbors. The last two weeks, you've seen, or last two meetings, you've seen me with a mask on. I am now past my 14 days of being to a high exposure zone, so I feel more comfortable as I'm double vaccinated up here, that I'm not causing undue risk to my neighbors. But I just would ask us, let's think of our kids. Let's give them the year they deserve that they lost out on last year and be good neighbors. I'm looking forward to the meeting tonight. And it looks like Mayor Protem Demont, you'd like to speak.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to follow up on your ask, since we're talking about it, I'd rather follow up now. No secret, I'm a big Second Amendment guy, but I think that your ask is very relevant and that it's a good act. I know that your service on Ralston House is a big deal. That's a great organization. For those of you who don't know, I would look them up. That's worthy of giving money to. My wife served for a while with Mayor Protem, or with Mayor Sykes. They get so used to calling you that, oh, you buy my title, as well as City Manager Tripp. And so it's a great organization, and I see no problem with us getting behind that. You know, it's a great responsibility to be a county, and I think that people should take that seriously. And, you know, the same things that you're saying about protecting children. I don't see why anybody wouldn't want to do that. So I've got no problem and would be in full support of that sort of educational campaign.
Thank you so much. Counselor Scully.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too would like to echo that support. This is a very important organization, and I think this would be an important presentation. So thank you, I'd like this as well.
Counselor Smith.
Thank you for bringing this to discussion tonight. I would, however, would like to discuss with my organization, CASA. I don't perceive it to be a conflicting interest, but I'd like to, I don't want it to be a conflicting interest if so. But I'd like to just take an opportunity to get back to you and know what they're doing, what they support, and how we move forward with that at late time.
Okay. And I apologize, I probably wasn't clear. This won't be branded under Ralston House. They were asking municipalities to help just spread the word about the importance of gun safety and storage. So it's not going to be a fundraiser for Ralston House or a, this is something that, because they partner with not just the judicial district, but also law enforcement, that is very traumatic, that is constantly coming, not constantly, but are too often coming through their doors. So, but I appreciate that check with Ralston House. Counselor Seymour.
Yes, Ma'am Mayor, I am also in support of an educational campaign.
Thank you. All right. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a group of routine matters to be acted on in a single motion and vote. Counsel, at this time, does any member wish for a move in an item for separate discussion? Mayor Protem. Seeing none. At this time, I will take a motion to consider the consent agenda. Counselor Smith.
I move to adopt the consent agenda, items 8A through 8D.
Mayor Protem Demont.
Second.
There has been a motion and a second. This is a roll call vote.
Mayor Protem Demont.
Yes.
Mayor Sykes.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
And Counselor Vols.
Yes.
The consent agenda passes on a vote of six to zero.
The next item before us is appointments and resignations. As we have none, we will move on to item 10, which is public hearings and other new business. Can I get a motion for Counselors Bill number 30? Counselor Seymour.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I moved to pass Counselors Bill number 30 on first reading, providing the supplemental appropriation of funds to the 2021 budget of the general utility enterprise, wastewater and water, parks, open space and trails, and general capital improvement funds.
Counselor Smith.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns on this item? Seeing none. Clerk Parker, will you please lead us in a roll call vote?
Certainly. Mayor Sykes.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Demont.
Yes.
Counselors Bill number 30 passes on first reading with a vote of six to zero.
Thank you. The next item before us is Counselors Bill number 31. Do I have a motion for that? Mayor Protem Demont.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to pass Counselor Bill number 31 on first reading, authorizing the city manager to sign a nine-month lease agreement with ABC Entertainment LLC for continuation of kids' night out program.
Counselor Scully.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns on this? Mayor Protem.
I just wanted to quickly thank City Manager Tripp and the Parks and Rec Department for this continuing program. It's a good program, and I know our youth really appreciates it, as well as our parents really appreciate being able to drop their kids off and have a night out.
I would be remiss if I didn't give credit where credit is due. Mayor Protem Demont, one year this was being recommended to be removed as one of the offerings that we have associated with our Parks and Rec Department. And Counselor Demont really made a challenge to that. And we joined him in council. And I would say in a year coming out of a pandemic, when we've all had a lot of togetherness, there may be some parents that really appreciate a night out. So this is going to be very well-valued by the community. And I know caution will be made to do everything we can to keep it a safe space. So are there any other comments, questions? Seeing none. Clerk Parker, will you please lead us in a roll call vote?
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demont.
Yes.
And Mayor Sykes.
Yes.
Counselors Bill number 31 passes first reading, six to zero.
The next item before us is Counselors Bill number 32. Counselor Scully.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to pass Counselors Bill number 32, placing questions on the November 2021 election ballot to amend the charter and direct the city clerk to certify the ballot language to the designated election officials for Adams and Jefferson Counties.
Counselor Vols.
A second to motion.
There has been a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns on Counselors Bill number 32? Counselor Vols.
No, sorry about that.
Okay. Counselor Smith.
Thank you. I do have a concern that this isn't coming forward with all of the recommended. I know this is a charter amendment. So my concern is that it's not coming forward altogether as one on a ballot so that we can see it together and discuss as a council as far as what it would look like in its totality or its entirety on what we're presenting to our voters in November. So my concern is that it's not together. So I hesitate to move forward with this, but I know that this is things that we've talked about. But that's, I just want to note my concern.
Thank you, Counselor Smith. City Manager Tripp, do you want to respond or?
I'll bring Assistant City Manager Chris Lindsay in on the meeting. And Chris, if you have any follow-up questions for clarification on this question, but please, if you would, help us understand to the best of your ability how this was crafted and answered Counselor Smith's questions. Thank you.
So thank you for the question, Counselor Smith. Counsel gave us pretty clear direction two weeks ago this evening on which ballot measures to bring forward, and that was measures to bring forward, and that was eight separate ballot measures that each had consensus among city council. So the first three of those come tonight because they require two readings. The additional five, which only require one reading due to the fact that they only require a resolution, will be coming back for action before city council next week. And to be completely frank, those took an additional level of work and review because council had some changes to those two weeks ago when they provided us direction.
Thank you. I thi- I think that's fair. However, these are topics and items that we've been discussing for a year now. This is brought forward as far as a budget and policy discussion that we had last summer. So it's very unfortunate that it's coming in front of council with less than a week for review for finalizing to be on the ballot. For the items that are not requiring a two, a two council meeting reading, why, why do we go to a resolution versus an ordinance?
Mr. Lindsay, would you like to answer that, or is that a question for Ms. Decker?
That's going to be a question for the Attorney's Office.
Ms. Decker, will you please? Let me see if I can get all this technology right. Yes, Mayor. The reason for the second, having, requiring two readings is because that's what's required to amend the charter. And it's not, and that is not required to put ballot questions on the ballot.
So when we have questions such as our marijuana use or, or bonding use with our post-tax, that you don't need to include that in the charter?
No.
Okay. So these items that are coming forward to us are two readings because it's worth setting it as an ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. I've just made my concerns known and transparent, that I find it very off that we're reviewing this a week in advance.
Thank you, Counselor Smith. And while I hear and, and understand where you're coming from, I do feel particularly on the marijuana question. We did ask for some clarifying lang-, we, we did ask for a little bit more detail, I believe, in the ballot language, so it was more clear to voters how it would be really, what areas we could regulate on. And so we had not given a date on that, I don't think, until the discussion that we had last. Is, is that your recollection as well, Mayor Pro Tem?
It is, I guess, for me, part of the, because I did, you know, transparency's sake, send an email asking when we would be able to see it, mostly because I know that we had given substantial feedback. My concern is, if we see it, and it's, you know, right before the, you know, we get agenda Wednesday, Thursday, you know, that's going to be right before we go into a weekend, and if we have concern with what the changes are, that's not going to be a lot of time to adjust. So that was the reason that I had brought it forward, to see how quickly we could see it, if it was possible, to, you know, how the changes were taken, because I know sometimes, you know, I might say something and something else is heard, and I feel like we had an in-depth conversation about it. But that's part of my concern, and I think that Counselor Smith raises a good point as far as, we've been talking about some of this for a while, so, you know, and I know that we've had a busy schedule, so it would have been nice if we would have been able to have last week's conversation a little sooner to give us more time, but we are where we are. But to be fair, I do think that we did have substantial conversation and changes, but, you know, I hear Counselor Smith's concern and share it somewhat, that we get it, and it didn't hit the mark. We don't have a lot of time to pivot, and that might put us in a situation where maybe we're not comfortable putting it forward to the voters.
Thank you for those thoughts. City Manager Trip?
I responded to some of you last week about this, and I want to respond in public and tell you that if you want to make changes this evening to this, we can sit here and do that. If you have feedback about the items that are going to be on the agenda next Monday, I'd like to hear that. Are there difficulties, are there issues with what you'd have to vote on tonight that we didn't hit the mark, the things that you want to change? Because I think City Attorney Decker, we can do that right here at the podium if they'd like to make those changes, correct?
Yes.
Felt like a science fiction apology there. Went into the ether. Yeah. Sometimes it appears that they turn it back on. So I, I, I believe you, it has happened to all of us. We have found, Counselor Smith and I, that they, it's like a belt and suspender, you have to turn the volume all the way down and mute it, otherwise it's the belt and suspender. Mayor Pro Tem Demont?
Thank you, Ms. Decker, for clearing the air and widening the mood. I, I think, for me, I don't have any problems with, with what's here tonight. I guess it's just, so, I mean, we can adjust if, if need be from the dais. It's not the preferred way. So I think it's more of a learning, maybe a learning mo- moment moving forward, but it would have been nice to have last week's discussion with a little more time that way, or not up against a, a four-day window if there's changes with the weekend in there. So, so we'll, we'll have to see what's on next week's agenda, but I don't have any problems with what's on here personally tonight. I more so have concern about what we're going to see on the next agenda, making sure that it hit the mark.
We will get that to you early if we can, before Wednesday. I will remind you, and I want to just say publicly, we have eight items going on this, going on this ballot, and there was an extraordinary amount of time. I have to say, over the weekend, nonstop, since you gave direction, get this ready for this, this evening's agenda.
Counselor Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. The items that are presented on tonight's agenda, I don't have a problem with. It's, it would have been nice to have it in its totality, to understand in full formality what the language would be for our entire ballot. And it, it's honestly uncomfortable to have it down to a wire, because my understanding is that staff has been telling council that the deadline to get things on the ballot is at the end of August, and Monday is, is the end of August. And so having the formal review would have been nice prior to our deadline, which is Monday, is what I understand.
Thank you, Counselor Smith. I appreciate the concerns. We have talked about these items for quite some time, so I, I do under, I do hear what you're saying. I do think we also gave some pretty substantial changes or tweaks to how we wanted them presented. I would ask every member of council, recognizing that this is an issue that we want to get right, because it's going to be a lengthy ballot, making sure that we're hitting like the right legal, using, everything was, was a big task for staff. So why don't we, at this point, make a commitment to try to get to our agenda, to at least review that as soon as possible, so that we're giving our members of staff as much time as they can to respond, recognizing it's not ideal. I, I fully hear you on that, it's not ideal, but I think it was the way, the way it played out. So if you know other comments or questions, I'm going to ask City Clerk Parker to lead us in a roll call vote.
Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Volz?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Demont?
Yes.
Mayor Sykes?
Yes.
And Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselors Bill Number 32 passes on first reading with a vote of six to zero.
So the next item before us is Resolution Number 29. Counselor Scully?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution Number 29, calling for a coordinated election in Adams and Jefferson County.
Counselor Volz?
A second to motion.
There has been a motion and a second. Is there any comments, questions, or concerns on this item? Seeing none. City Clerk Parker, please lead us in a roll call vote.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Volz?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Demont?
Yes.
Mayor Sykes?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
And Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Resolution Number 29 is adopted on a vote of six to zero.
The next item before us is Resolution Number 26. Can I get a motion on this item? Counselor Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution Number 26, authorizing the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Westminster and the Colorado Department of Transportation to construct multimodal improvements to West 100th Avenue from Sim Street to Alchire Street.
Counselor Seymour?
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns on this item? Seeing none. City Clerk Parker, will you please lead us in a roll call vote?
Counselor Volz?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Demont?
Yes.
Mayor Sykes?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Scully?
Yes.
And Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Resolution Number 26 is adopted on a vote of six to zero.
Counselor Smith, since this is connected to the previous, will you?
Yes, thank, thank you. I move to adopt Resolution Number 27, to adopt Denver Regional Council of Governments' Transportation Improvement Plan, supplemental funding for multimodal improvements to West 100th Avenue from Sim Street to Alchire Street.
Counselor Seymour?
Second.
There has been a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none. City Clerk Parker, this is a roll call.
Mayor Pro Tem Demont?
Yes.
Mayor Sykes?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
And Counselor Volz?
Yes.
Resolution Number 27 is adopted on a vote of six to zero.
And Counselor Smith?
I move to pass Counselors Bill Number 33 on first reading to appropriate 1,400,000 in grant funds from the Colorado Department of Transportation and Denver Regional Council of Governments to construct multimodal improvements to West 100th Avenue from Sim Street to Alchire Street.
Counselor Seymour?
Second.
Are there any comments, questions, or concerns? I will just say to our staff who worked on this grant proposal, thank you and well done. It's great to see these dollars coming to improve safe multimodal transportation for our residents. City Clerk Parker?
Mayor Sykes?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Volz?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Demont?
Yes.
Counselors Bill Number 33 passes on first reading with a vote of six to zero.
Thank you. The next item before us is Resolution Number 28. Counselor Scully, can I get a motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution Number 28, adopting the Westminster Transportation and Mobility Plan.
Counselor Volz?
A second to motion.
There is a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns on this item? Counselor Volz?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to thank staff for their hard work on this. I know they took this to the public. There was a lot of good public comment that helped make this a better plan, and it's, in my opinion, an outstanding plan. I really like the connectivity. So there are lots of areas where the staff and based on the public worked on connecting our trails to our neighborhoods and to other assets. So thank you, staff, for your hard work on this. I plan to vote yes on this tonight. Mayor, could I ask the Department Director to come up and just make a brief comment? I think he ought to give credit where credit is due.
I would enjoy that. Mr. Downing?
Thank you, Mayor. And Counsel, Dave Downing, Director of Community Development. You probably noticed with the last two items, this is a big night for the transportation and mobility planners of community development. And I want to, I do, I do want to recognize those people. Thank you, Mayor, for recognizing staff, but I want to be a little more specific. We have both of those planners with us tonight. On the la-, your last item, the, the person who was just instrumental in, in preparing the application and landing the Dr. Cog Grant was our Senior Transportation and Mobility Planner, Deborah Basket, who you all know very well. And on the Transportation and Mobility Plan, our Transportation and Mobility Planner, Christina Evenoff, has spent much of the last three years, two, two years, it seemed like three, two years of her life dedicated to this, and, and thank you again for, Counselor Volz, for recognizing staff. I wanted to make sure that we put a name to the, the people who did the yeoman's work on both of these items. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Downing.
Counselor Volz, any other comment?
No, I just want to say again, thank you, staff, and thank you, Director Downing, for mentioning my name, the people who worked so hard on this. Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions from my colleagues? Tonight is a big deal for transportation. This is, you know, when we get our, our, our community survey back, people don't want to have, spend any excess time in their, in their cars, right? People want their kids to get to school safely. Westminster residents love their trails and their bike paths, and they appreciate access to transit. I, similarly to Counselor Volz, was really impressed about the iterative and adaptive nature of the public outreach that happened, that this was not presenting to, but it was a listening to session, and really looking at that feedback and figuring out, how do we use that to tweak the final product? So I wanted to say thank you. Oftentimes, people get fatigued with community outreach, members of our community, and, and this is something we can point to to explain why it is so meaningful. Tonight's fun because we had implementation, right? This is, this is an example of implementing the type of projects that are in the plan. So thank you. I, I know this is part of Westminster Forward, and this is one of the reasons that Westminster is a community that is always looking forward and, and doing it in a thoughtful and smart approach. So thank you to everyone who worked on it, and thank you for your team. And Mr. Downing, I always appreciate when a leader takes the time to recognize those who, that, that work with him. So thank you all, and now, seeing no other comments, City Clerk Parker?
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Volz?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Demont?
Yes.
And Mayor Sykes?
Yes.
Resolution Number 28 is adopted unanimously.
The next item before us is to remove, or to move on the recommendation of the city manager to ratify a letter of intent for with the funds. Is there a motion? Counselor Scully?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move, based on the recommendation of the city manager, to determine that the public interest will best be served by ratifying a letter of intent to pursue Water Infrastructure Financing and Innovation Act funding through the Environmental Protection Agency, and by ratifying a pre-application to pursue state revolving funds through the state of Colorado.
Counselor Seymour?
Second.
There has been a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns? Counselor Demont, or Mayor Pro Tem Demont?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had a couple of quick questions. So specifically, how these funds might be used if they're being, so I know that Water 2025 is on this list, and it's something that I might have some reservations with, although this, like many things, there's a lot of good things in there that I 100% agree with. I'm just curious, is this funding, once it's applied for, absolutely tied to what's on this list, or is this just a list of things you potentially might use? And just, is it my other question, so then you could just answer them all in one? There's a portion in the memo that talks about, I'm giving the authority to go after other funding and finance tools. Maybe you could speak about that portion, too, what exactly that means?
Thank you for the question, Mayor Pro Tem. We have two sides of this equation that put this together, the finance side and the operations side. Both of you are this evening. I think I'll start with Finance Director Tammy Hitchens, and ask Tammy if she'd come on to the meeting and take a shot at these two questions, and she needs to bring Christine Gray or others up with her, I'm sure she'll do that. So Tammy, are you available?
I am.
I am. So, so in, in looking at the financing for, and utilizing these funds, I think there's a couple of questions. One of the questions is, do we, do we end up hurting ourselves by having this letter of intent out there, by looking at what the rating agencies look at, those different types of things? Frankly, I mean, the rating agencies are going to look at what we've actually done. So if we've actually entered into these types of agreements where we're borrowing the money for certain projects, then they're going to, they're going to take that data, that information, and when they're looking at our ratios and, and the numbers behind the numbers, then that's where they'll determine whether or not this is going to impact our, our ratings. So, so I guess that's probably the, the main thing, is that this is just a tool in the toolbox, out of all of the tools that we have the ability to utilize, and, and we will pick the best tools that we, that we have. But I think this is, you know, one of the ideas is to go out and look for some new and additional ways to do some of this funding, and these are, you know, very creative, or creative ways, and different ways than what the city has utilized in the past, to be able to, to, you know, find, find ways to finance the, the projects that we need to do. As far as if whether or not we're tied to these, I do not believe they do, but I will hand that off to Christine to, to talk more about the projects themselves.
Good evening, Counsel. Christine Gray, Business Operations Administrator for Public Works and Utilities. We identified Water 2025 as the project to be funded for both the WIVIA application and the state revolving fund application. If those projects, if that project does not move forward, then we will return to both lenders and resubmit applications for other projects. But right now, that is the program that is identified for those fundings.
Thank you for the answer. And that, it does answer my question. I guess, the way that I am going to look at this is, I am going to support it, even though I have some concerns about what's portions of the 2025. And I just want to be transparent about the reason why. I think that, you know, I've left room open in my concerns to not say this is definitely the wrong path. I just question the path. I think one thing that this council has unanimously agreed on is finding creative ways to do funding that help the right bear. But I do appreciate the fact that you are, you know, doing that and finding creative ways to fund projects. So considering so far that project is on the path it's going, I think that this is a good thing, and I will be supporting it. I appreciate you answering my question.
Thank you. Are you, any further questions, Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Ms. Gray. Counselor Smith? Yes, thank you. This was one of the questions I had sent to staff on our agenda, and some of them have been answered, and, sort of, but I'm going to ask again for transparency sake. But what are the financial risks if, if we actually execute this? I realize that it's just a letter of intent. It doesn't get executed until counsel says so. So that's one question. Does this affect our bonding? And part of the answer from Ms. Hitchens was that they look at the rating itself. What was just answered with Mayor Protem, excuse me, Mayor Protem's question. And then the last question is, does that have any effect to how and when we can bond? So the two questions really left are, are there any financial risk if we execute this? And then, does that have an effect to how and when we bond?
Ms. Hitchens, do you, or Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Tripp, would you like to ask your staff to... Ms. Hitchens?
So, so there is no risk of signing this document here as far as financial risk. Again, it's a tool that's in the toolbox. In the big, the big picture, the bonding is going to be, going to be issued at the point in time when we know that we have a project, we have the, the funds to, to make the debt payments on it, and we're able to move forward with, with whatever projects that we determine. It's not, at this point in time, signing this particular agreement would not be risky to our financial situation.
Okay, that, that all makes sense. You know, I, I don't disagree with the direction that we have moving, moving forward with this particular item brought forward to council. However, it does make me a little apprehensive because I'm not as knowledgeable on the bonding and LOI and interest in loan process. I'm thinking of this in a much smaller scale on an individual level. If we have an opportunity to go get as many loans as possible, what is the repayment plan? Is it possible? Are we putting ourselves in an upside down position? And so I just don't know enough about it, and I apologize, but I can't move forward with it tonight, just because, and I know that this isn't binding, it's just a tool in toolbox, as Ms. Hitchens had mentioned, but I don't feel comfortable moving forward with something that I don't have a good grasp on.
Okay. Are there any other comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, there's a roll call vote.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
No.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demott.
Yes.
Mayor Seitz.
Yes.
And Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
The motion passes on a vote of five to one.
Counselor Scully, would you like to complete this item?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to authorize to apply for future funding opportunities for water, wastewater, utility enterprise, capital improvement projects, so long as applications are non-binding, and do not commit the city to entering into any financial agreement or commitment without city council authorization.
Counselor Seymour.
Second.
There has been a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns on this item? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Counselor Smith.
No.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demott.
Yes.
Mayor Seitz.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
And Counselor Scully.
Yes.
The motion passes on a vote of five to one.
The next item before us is entering into an agreement with Motorola Solutions. Is there a motion? Mayor Protem Demott.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move, based on the recommendation of the city manager, to determine the public interest would be best served by authorizing a negotiated purchase agreement from the sole source provider, Motorola Solutions, Inc., to provide 75 new APX 6000 XEP 25 encrypted portable radios to the Westminster Fire Department in 2021, and an amount not to exceed $355,295.
Counselor Seymour.
Second.
There has been a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns on this item? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demott.
Yes.
Mayor Seitz.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
And Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Item 10G passes six to zero.
The next item before us is in regards to a contract with Year One. Is there a motion on this item? Mayor Protem Demott.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move, based upon the recommendation of the city manager, to determine the public interest would be best served by ratifying a sole source contract with Year One, Inc., doing business as Mile High Youth Corpse to perform work on the Lower Church Ranch Lake Restoration Project in the amount of $30,000 per year for 2021 and 2022, a total amount not to exceed $60,000.
Counselor Scully.
I second.
There's been a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns on this item? Counselor Seymour.
Madam Mayor, in reviewing this in the packet, I was, I was very excited to see this come forward. It's a great way to rehabilitate Lower Church Ranch, which, for those of us over off the old wadowers section, you know, the, the lake itself from water flow situation, it's naturally turning into cattails, and now we have an opportunity to turn in something to be a great site for the residents on that side of town, and visitors that drive by in 36, too. So, thank you to staff for bringing this to us.
Well said, Counselor Seymour. Are there any other comments, questions, and concerns? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Mayor Protem Demott.
Yes.
Mayor Seitz.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
And Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Item 10H passes six to zero.
The next item before us is item I, reallocation of funds. Can I get a motion on this item? Counselor Seymour.
Hey, Madam Mayor. I move to authorize the reallocation of a total of $836,615, specifically $76,417 from the 94th and 96th Avenue Storm Inlet account, $109,500 from the storm water pipe cleaning account, $140,000 from the storm water pipe cleaning and GPS inspection account, and $510,698 from the Walnut Creek stabilization accounts, to the asset inventory and condition assessment project account.
Is there a second? Mayor Protem Demott?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns on this item? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Mayor Seitz.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Demott.
Yes.
Item 10I-1 passes six to zero.
Would you like to go ahead and finish this out?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to authorize the city manager to execute an engineering services contract amendment with HDR Engineering, Inc., for the storm water infrastructure assessment, in the amount of $982,537, to increase the total contract amount to $1,730,110 to end, authorize an $86,506 contingency, thus bringing the total project cost to $1,816,616.
Mayor Protem.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns? I just want to highlight real quick. In the staff report, it's noted that our work with our consultants and staff was able to lower the projected cost for this project by, I believe, roughly $800,000. So really, enormous savings for our residents due to that type of partnership, and really just ethic of efficiency and cost-conscious work. So just wanted to say thank you for that, that it was recognized, and appreciate the service to our residents. Seeing no other comments and questions, this is a roll call vote.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demott.
Yes.
And Mayor Seitz.
Yes.
Item 10I, number two, passes six to zero.
The next item on the agenda is item 10J in regards to solar electric, a contract with Solar Electric Power Company. Can I get a motion? Mayor Protem Demott?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move, based on the recommendation of the city manager, to determine that the public interest will be best served by a negotiated contract with Solar Electric Power Company, and authorizes the city manager to execute a negotiated contract with Solar Electric Power Company in the amount not to exceed $202,405, plus an additional $20,240 for contingency, for a total authorized expenditure of $222,645, based contract plus contingency.
Counselor Scully.
I second.
There is a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns on this item? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demott.
Yes.
Mayor Seitz.
Yes.
And Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Item 10J passes on a vote of six to zero.
The next item before us is item 10K. Can I get a motion? Mayor Protem Demott?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve the intergovernmental agreement for shared judicial and legal services with the City of Northland.
And Counselor Vols?
I second the motion.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns on this item? Counselor Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a three-part question that I did also give to staff. For this item, is this common practice? I've never heard of such a thing, so can you provide examples as to why and when this would be needed? And then why is Northland choosing Westminster and not Thornton, for example?
City Manager Tripp, do you have, I'm sorry, Ms. Decker?
Counselor Smith?
Yep.
I will answer your questions. I just want to make sure, no, it's not even, it will go through. Okay, I think I have it. Okay, to answer your first question, is this common practice? It is a common practice, although it's not usually formally documented through an agreement. There are a few jurisdictions that do formalize it in agreement, and there are northern cities like Greeley and Fort Collins have an agreement. The, the point of the agreement is to establish a process when it's, when these services are necessary, and it's at the complete discretion of each jurisdiction, whether or not they want to provide the service that is described in the agreement. So we don't have to do it. It's just, it just sets up a process for us to follow.
Okay. And then the other two is, can you provide an example as to when and why it would be needed? And then as to, why did Northland choose Westminster?
Okay. The reason for it is, why another jurisdiction would have to provide these services if there is an irreconcilable conflict of interest? An example of that would be if an elected official or an elected official's son or daughter is a victim in a crime, of a crime that is being prosecuted by our prosecutor's office and presided over by the municipal judge. In that case, we would request the services from Northland.
Okay. And then as to Westminster?
Northland likes us better? No. I think, I think it has to do with the staff, and the staff from Northland are familiar with the staff from Westminster.
Great. Thank you so much.
I propose Northland likes us better bumper stickers, but... Counselor Vols?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to confirm for the public record that the city requesting the judicial or legal services pay for those services. Is that correct? Did I read that in the packet that way? Meaning if Northland requests our services, they pay for those services, not we don't. Is that right?
Well, we, both parties would have their regular compensation, but any additional costs would be paid by the requesting party.
Yep, okay, very good. Thank you. I plan to vote yes on this tonight. Thank you.
Seeing no other comments or questions, this is a roll call vote.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demott.
Yes.
Mayor Seitz.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
And Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Item 10K passes six to zero.
The next item that concludes new business and public hearings, the next item before us is old business and passage of ordinances on second reading. Before us, we have Resolution number five. Is there a motion? Mayor Protem Demott?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to adopt the Resolution 25 terminating the local state of emergency related to COVID-19 pandemic.
Counselor Vols?
I second the motion.
There is a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns on this item? I see Mayor Protem Demott. I was not sure, is staff going to be giving a presentation on this based off of the questions we asked a few weeks back?
We can. We have information available as to up-to-date data related to virus. Be happy to provide that. That's available for you if you'd like to see that before you take action.
Okay, perhaps. I'm going to go through my colleagues' questions first, and it may become relevant. Mayor Protem Demott?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I know that there was an ask to hold on this, and so we, I did participate in the meeting that was recommended by the mayor. It was informative and kind of gave us some good context of where we are and why it's important for us to move forward cautiously, I guess is a good way to put it. I do think, though, with the information given last week, as far as where we're at as a city, I would be comfortable moving forward, but I certainly would appreciate any input from staff as to whether or not they've changed their opinion, whether or not it's appropriate for us to move forward with terminating the local state of emergency.
Counselor Vols?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also am inclined to support this tonight, and I know we kind of held off for a couple of weeks to get additional information, and it was helpful and useful. I would have listened to the discussion tonight. I want to hear any comments staff have in response to the questions we've asked previously. A couple of questions I have right now, though, and this maybe is on the docket, and I wasn't here last week. So, removing this emergency order, how does this affect the seating at restaurants? Meaning we, through this process, we did allow extra seating at restaurants outside, out of doors. We moved this quickly. outdoors. We moved this quickly. There were also liquor permits and whatnot involved in that as well. Will, will this in any way arm that effort? And then what are the next steps in that effort? Meaning, what are the deadlines we need to act on and move forward to be sure that we, we still have some more months. I'm sure our local business owners would like to continue to utilize, utilize these extra services. Where are we and how do we move forward on that? That would be one of my questions. Do we want to hold them for the end or do that now?
Thank you very much for that question, Mr. Vols. Mr. Tripp?
Yes, Counselor Vols, I'll take a shot at this and have people in the room and, provide more information, but just very briefly, we have a, under the emergency order, we approved outdoor seating and made some changes to our, our codes in order to permit that, and that was made as a part of the emergency order, and that will expire on September 30th. It's my understanding that that will continue until September 30th unless you take action, we take action to disband that. So even if you were to eliminate the emergency order this evening, I believe that September 30th order would still be in place at restaurants? That begs the question, what about after September 30th? The response I've gotten from City Legal is that there would be time to put an item on an agenda before September 30th and make a change to our ordinance to permit that to happen. That'll be something that we would move on quickly. I think if this were eliminated this evening, I would probably also be asking economic development staff for feedback. You know, I think that there was, my observation is, is that there were, there was quite a bit of infrastructure that was put in place and paid for by restaurants in our community, and although it may not be being fully utilized at this time with people, you know, enjoying more freedoms, if there were, there were restrictions, it may be very important for them to have that ability. So if there's anything to add, be happy to have people come on and add things, but I think it gets to the core of what you're asking. Does it, Counselor Vols?
Yeah, it does. Thank you, Mr. Tripp. I would encourage us to look at that as a tool and offer that to our business owners as a tool if they need it. I strongly would encourage that. And at the time we did that, I, you know, I commended staff for their quick, their quick work. I mean, we did it very quickly, and I personally talked to many business owners who were very appreciative of that. So I want to, again, commend staff, but I would encourage us to look at that and see if there, if that's a tool for businesses to continue their, their operations, then that may be something we want to look at. I would encourage that. If we tonight vote to in the emergency order, if there are federal funds and we're going to be reimbursed for some of our activities, there's additional federal funds, I don't know if that's going to happen or not, does this preclude us receiving those funds? Meaning, do we need to have this in place if there are funds that come through at a later date? How do we handle that situation?
I'm going to ask the city attorney to weigh in on this. I'm just going to make one comment in advance of that. And I, and it's an area of some concern that I have is that, you know, the mayor has the ability, under my request, to enact another emergency order. This is the way it happened last time. Mayor Atchison signed that emergency order, and it was on the request that I received from the city attorney and public safety folks who believed it was necessary. I would just say that one of the concerns that I might have pulling this down is that I want you to understand that if it's needed between now and say the election with six people on the council right now, I'd want you to understand that I would want to, I would want to move quickly to have an order in place, to make sure we protected our interests to receive reimbursement. Yet, you know, we didn't think it would happen on March 16th, 2020, and to say that it's unlikely now is probably not a safe thing to say. I would just say, I want you to understand that we'll move on that, but it would require your ratification. You know, we would need four votes to ratify that. Then at a subsequent meeting, I'd want there to be some understanding that we'd really need that support. So City Attorney Decker, is there anything you want to add to that?
First, I'd like to clarify the change to the code that would be required for the expanded patio regulations. I don't want to commit community development to get it done by October 1st. It's, it would be a very tight schedule. I think it's possible, but it would be a very, very tight schedule. And I don't want to sit here and commit community development to something I haven't even talked to them about.
Okay. Maybe, Kristen, on this one, do we, could we extend that beyond September 30th? Give us more time? Is there a way to do that outside of an ordinance change within, because we're currently in the emergency order right now?
That is true. I suppose if you would have that authority.
How about if I extend it to November 30th right now in the moment? Give us a little time to study this. I don't think any businesses are going to argue with the, with the expanded ability. And that, and I appreciate you bringing that up. That would give us a little more time to get this together.
I think that is currently within your authority.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much. We have a few more folks that have questions, but I want to make sure Mayor, or Mayor, I just made you Mayor Protam, sorry.
Oh, good, oh, good.
I think I still had to answer the second question, which is that the reimbursement eligibility for federal funds would not be affected.
Okay, good.
Under current law.
Okay, good. Thank you for that answer. I appreciate that and both, both answers. So I just, I want to say then, you know, all along this process, we've strived to do our decisions and make these decisions based on data, based on science, based on fact. And we've done that all along, and I think we're to that point. I feel comfortable with that decision. I think, you know, like I said, we've been data-driven in our decision-making. We've listened to public health professionals all along the way, and I think we're at a stage now where I'm comfortable with this. So I just wanted to say that before I take my vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mayor Protam Demont?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to commend Counselor Vols on bringing up good questions for the businesses and Mr. Tripp for extending that. I think that one of the things that, you know, if there are any silver linings in such a disastrous last 18 months, it's the fact that both people and businesses have learned ways to move forward, and I truly hope that we use the, the teams that came up with things like the outdoor dining and figure out how we can continue things like the outdoor liquor. There's been a lot of innovation across the country in how businesses have survived this, and I think it would be a big miss if we didn't use those lessons learned and figure out how we as government could partner with the businesses and in some cases get out of their way and let them earn. So I think this is a great opportunity, and I appreciate that Counselor Vols looked at it through that lens. And the other thing I just wanted to at least address, as far as the six-person council and if something came up, I think when this came up, I think there was concern whenever you have emergency ordinance, it's a big, it's a big ask to ratify. But I do think that this council, if, I believe we unanimously before supported it, and I think if the occasion arise, I have confidence that everybody on this dais would do the right thing, and if that was the right move, that we would ratify it. So I'm confident that that, that would happen. So I'm comfortable moving forward knowing that there are things in place that could accommodate anything that might come our way in the future.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Counselor Smith?
Thank you. I just want to say that I'm in support of this tonight. It hasn't changed from my previous thought, but I do appreciate the extra information from the presentation that the mayor suggested that we attend. I think it was helpful and understanding in its entirety, having a more in-depth picture of where we're at. So I appreciated that, but it still didn't move the needle enough for me to say no. But I will be supporting this, removing of the emergency order tonight.
Thank you. Any other comments? Counselor Scully?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I'm very conflicted on this one. I still am not in support of this entirely. You know, we, we do have a variant out there. We have hospitalizations rising again, and so I'm concerned. I guess I would like to hear from the city. I'd like the presentation to understand where the city is feeling about this, and maybe that will help persuade me.
City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. One more comment on the, the program, the expanded patio program, is that it should also be amended to be consistent with current laws, such as there aren't the capacity limitations that there were previously, and social distancing requirements and things like that, that should just be updated in that, in those program materials.
So I'm, just want to make sure I'm following you completely. So does that give you pause to just extending the order right now because it has remnants of kind of public health orders that no longer exist and capacity limits that no longer exist, and so you think it's more appropriate to do this a different way? I just, I want to make sure I'm understanding the significance of what you're bringing up.
Right. No, I just wanted to let you know that in addition to extending it, there should be some slight modifications which could have been done a while ago, and, and I believe that, I'm not sure they're even being enforced now since they're not required by state law. So when we extend the date, we will also, the date, all of that stuff is listed on our website in the program information for the temporary use. When we do that, we should amend just those tiny, not tiny rules, but the, those requirements to be current and consistent with law today.
Absolutely. That seems like an important catch. Thank you so much for that. So I appreciate your request for data from our, our staff, and I have to tell you, I'm hoping that the staff report was written weeks and weeks ago before the recent surge. I actually don't disagree with my colleagues that perhaps it's time to retire the executive order, but that's really because it's not giving us a meaningful or relevant tool at this time. We can allow the public health departments to follow their, their orders and the state's orders. But I do have to say that the language in here saying, and I'm going to quote it because it's just not consistent with what I have heard from either of our public health directors. It says due to significantly lower infection rates. That's, that is not appear to be the case. And so what I think is we have a very heightened responsibility as public officials during a pandemic not to send mixed messages. We are seeing a Delta surge. We are seeing more children who are contracting this nationally. That may not be the case in Colorado yet, but I, I just want to make sure we're not confusing our residents and saying, you know, you know, victory and, and asking people to let their guard down too soon. So I am, I do have questions before we go into the staff presentation that are again into, in regards to the tools that we had for the business community. I am heartened to hear that we can just extend the order tonight that allows for that patio dining. I'm happy to hear that it doesn't prohibit us from collecting federal funds, but if there, if there is another wave of federal assistance because numbers do surge, would we need to have a second emergency declaration in order to be able to receive those? Mr. Dorr?
Good evening, Larry Dorr, Chief Financial Officer. It's been my experience that in most cases, and I'm sure in the city's history, it has received federal emergency management administration funds without having an emergency order in place. Certainly, there were instances that we couldn't anticipate, and I think it was prudent to enter into the order and the declarations as is and made the city eligible. But I'm not aware of any pending funds and would not anticipate any on the near-term horizon that would require such a declaration. So I don't think that there's a financial motivation for having such an, such an order and declaration in place at this time. Thank you.
And is, I'm just wanting clarity on that. Is that because of COVID relief dollars before we've already allocated them? Because this council is consistent, Mayor Protam asked pretty regularly why we continue to have the emergency declaration and receiving those federal funds was one of the more consistent answers given to him. And so forgive us as a council if we presumed that that's why federal, what we needed in order to receive those federal dollars. So, but I'm hearing from you that that's, we don't need for emergencies, federal emergencies to have a declaration?
Again, under the current acts that we've seen under the CARES Act and under the most recent distributions that we've received, we anticipated that, you know, there could be a need to have those orders in place, and of course, we had them for other purposes in our city. But no, we, we've left those open and had them in place as is in the event they were necessary, but those have all run their course and aren't needed at this time. And I think it was prudent to have those in place for the previous legislation, but no, we've been able to receive all of those funds and can let those move forward as is. I hope I'm answering the question.
I, I guess I'm not clear. Did we need those for the CARES dollars or not?
We did need those. Those are in place, and of course, that's been several months now, and that's all played, played out.
Okay, thank you. That is helpful. And if there was another such program that comes, obviously nothing's on the near-term horizon, we would simply get a recommendation from our city manager to reinstate this. Is that correct?
Correct. We'd be able to do that timely.
Thank you so much. I would love to hear from staff just to go over the numbers because I do think they're relevant. Just for general, I actually, I don't think I would have typically asked for them tonight, other than the fact that the staff report was talking about the lower level of incidents, and I just want to see, I guess, the data that was used.
We will do that. Director Kershman was prepared with some of that information. Thank you.
Good evening, Max Kershman, Public Works and Utilities. If I could get the slides that are set up for item 11, please? While those are coming, I'll just make an introductory comment. The slides that I have intend to show tonight is a, I'll say a return to the kind of data we were presenting you weekly before we went to the level-clear declaration. So we'll be, we'll be talking a little bit about hospitalization, incident rate, and positivity again. I thought that might be more useful. There's the first slide. You'll recognize this is kind of a pared-down version of a slide we were previously showing. A couple of things of interest here would be if you look at the Adams and Jefferson County numbers at 130, sorry, my, my print is too small, 119 and 106 respectively, those numbers being greater than 100 carry the label very high. So as an incidence rate, both counties as well as the state are in a very high range by a label. If you look at hospitalizations, you'll, you'll see a number of 700 as we were doing before. That count, that, that data is current as of today, and it reflects those that are positive as well as those that are under investigation, a total of 700. Related to that, before I go to the next slide, related to that is the, at the state level, CDPH looks at the number of ICU beds that are available, and they had, they show it by a regional map of the state, and anything less than 15% I think is regarded to be concerning or alarming. The, the ICU bed availability for Adams and Jefferson County, which actually fall in two different regions on the map, but is in the range of 20 to 23%, so it's not in that danger range that would worry the state. Now, if I could go to the next slide. This is a mapping of the hospitalization going all the way back to the beginning, and you see the two things off of this slide. One is there is, there does seem to be a pattern. About every three to four months, there's a peak. That peak has varied significantly over the course of time, but we are at that same time interval where it's peaking again. The question is, is it going to level off and go back down, or is it going up? I, I don't know. I'm just saying, there is a pattern there, and where we are today is at 700. Next slide. This is a Jefferson County slide for the case rate information. We talked about that number for Jefferson. We talked about that number for Jefferson County as 106. That's what you see here. And the vertical lines on there just show different milestones of time and events that have taken place along the timeline. Once again, 100, little over 100 is concerning because it represents a significant increase from a, a low that was approaching zero just a couple of months ago. And then next slide, please, is the Adams County data similar and similar in pattern. This number is just slightly higher at 119, but you see the same kind of pattern developing as you did, as you do on Jefferson County. So those, the, that's a quick summary of percent positivity on the first slide, hospitalization and incident rates.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kirschbaum. If you don't mind staying for a second, I just want to ask you a few questions because I'm on Tri-County's website right now, and I recognize these got updated later in the day today. I think both of them at four o'clock, so it might've been after you presented this. But Adams County on this, it says the seven day incident rate, so per 100,000 is 213.9.
Is that, is that the 14 day number or the seven day number?
That is the seven day number. And so that is concerning to me. And then the seven day average test positivity has jumped up to 9%. So if your numbers were just from a couple of days ago, that's a pretty big spike.
I'll say.
Perhaps I am misreading this because it is confusing in multiple tabs, but that is on their guidance metrics tab with what the seven days is. And, and as you said, yes, both it's high community transmission. And then for the positivity, it's stating that it's substantial community transition, transmission. So we're in the orange category for, you know, how they describe that. So it definitely, I guess, I think this conversation is relevant because I want our residents to practice best practices and be good neighbors to each other. I, and I really appreciate your data. I just, and this I think came in again at four or five o'clock tonight, this new data. And I, again, could be reading it wrong, but I, I just think it keeps trending up a little bit. And so I'm prepared tonight to, to remove our emergency declaration because I don't believe the tools are as relevant, particularly with the workarounds that we can do. But if it turns out that we need to, I, I would hope you feel empowered to raise the flag if you would like this tool back because you need your EOC, I believe was one of the other things that you were able to mobilize quickly because of the emergency declaration. And I just, you have been closer to this data than anyone. And I just, I guess I'd like to hear how you're feeling at this moment in time. Are you comfortable just following the, the public health, you know, the two different public health entities and their rulemaking and eliminating this at this point?
I last looked at the data before four o'clock, so I didn't see that, that update. But the numbers that are on the slide were not only as of Friday, but as of midday today before that update. If it, if it doubled in one day's data, that's certainly worth paying greater attention to daily. It's a little surprising to see that kind of change in data in one day unless there was an under-reporting over the weekend. That is very significant. The, the numbers themselves, I, I don't think are a reason for you to keep or lift the order. I think they're important. They're important to pay attention to along the way. I wouldn't put it, I wouldn't hold it today as a reason to either keep or lift it. I think we ought to pay attention. The fact that one of the vaccines, the Pfizer vaccine is now approved for non-emergency use, for full use, that would certainly be a, a help in, in getting, getting messaging out for the importance of vaccination. I think the, the public health agencies for both counties are, are very attentive to issues related to schools. I know you, we've probably all seen the news stories on that. So I think there is proper and significant attention with both public health entities to continue to watch the data. And I guess with a jump like that in one day, I'll be looking at it again tomorrow.
I'm going to show you what I'm looking at after this because I think there's maybe a, a greater chance than not that I'm misreading it or misunderstanding it because I agree with you, a double in one day would be troubling. But I also agree with your premise. Really what's relevant today is does this emergency declaration give us tools we need to protect our residents' public health and safety and to support our businesses? And the answer that I have heard is a resounding no. And I also, you know, so I, that these tools are not particularly relevant at this point, but maybe come again and we will be alerted to that. And I think it's appropriate for us and in government not to keep a tool just because we want to have it, but, but only have, only exercise that authority when it's necessary. And I've heard loud and clear it's not at this point in time, not because I don't believe Delta is not an issue, but just because of, of the tools themselves. So that will be how I'm voting tonight. I appreciate your time. And again, I just wanted it for clarity to the community that this is still something to watch. Counselor Scully, did you, did that answer your questions?
It did, and I thank you for your presentation. I especially thank you for the comment that it shouldn't guide whether we keep the, the emergency order or release it. So in light of that information and knowing that we can quickly move if we need to, and that the council will support what the city manager and the mayor decide is important as far as an emergency ordinance, I will be supporting the removal of this ordinance tonight. Thank you very much, Mr.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I just want to emphasize what I hear the mayor saying, and that's that this council and the city is not letting its guard down. And now is not the time to let your guard down. It's just that this tool isn't serving the purpose because the state and the country has gotten better and that, you know, we want to make sure that you're not taking this as a false, we're across the finish line is what I'm hearing.
Exactly.
I think that we're all on that same page and it's important for the public to understand.
City Attorney Decker. Thank you, Madam Mayor. One more clarification. Prior to voting on this resolution, it might be prudent for a city council to confirm the extension of the, the date of the program to November 30th and also the updates to make it consistent with current law. The confirmation is required for the original regulations. It's not clear whether or not it's required for amendments, but better to be safe than sorry.
Yes. Okay. Can I get a motion from one of my colleagues extending our program to allow patio dining in public right of way? Is that, and parking lots?
It's the Expanded Area Food and Beverage Services Program. Can I get a motion to extend the Expanded Food and Beverages Program to November 30th with updates to the language to be more reflective of current public health orders and capacity restrictions?
So moved.
Second.
There has been a motion and a second. Can I get a roll call vote?
Counselor Vols?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demont?
Yes.
Mayor Sykes?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Scully?
Yes.
And Counselor Smith?
Yes.
And the motion passes six to zero.
Are there any other comments on resolution number 25? Otherwise, that is a roll call vote as well. No other comments. City Clerk Parker, please lead us.
Mayor Protem Demont?
Yes.
Mayor Sykes?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
And Counselor Vols?
Yes.
Resolution number 25, terminating the local state of emergency, passes six to zero.
Thank you so much. That concludes the business of tonight's city council meeting. We do have a post-meeting briefing that we will reconvene for, and we're going to take a 10 minute break. So at 9:05, we will come back, and I believe we will meet here for this presentation. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. The time is 8:55, and have a good evening.
I want to post aside in the room with hot soup for you. I want to be pissed. I'm thinking like water.
Thank you for being attentive with that, Mayor. I want to make sure the public can hear this because that really is the reason I do this is that, you know, you have this report. Of course, we have our chance back in session to talk about the performance and feedback. And I very much look forward to that as my two colleagues do too each year. And the chance to talk about the city's position today, a year ago from the last time we did this. And so this report summarizes those activities. I'm not really going to talk about this report an awful lot. What I wanted to do this evening in thinking about how to best present the community and to you a perspective on the year is I've asked the 11 departments and sustainability, so 12 different groups to give me a story about the work that they've done in the last year and pick something out that has gone on in the last year that characterizes what they believe to be the important elements of their work in the last year. So a little bit more human interest and these are some very interesting stories. And I have to tell you that there's 12 of them, there's thousands of them. But I do think that departments did a good job of using these stories to tell their message from the past year. I'd like to go ahead and move to the second slide if I could. First slide and now go ahead and move to number two. The first of those is the Policy and Budget Department. In an effort to encourage continuous improvement on the city's budget processes and budget document, the staff submitted for the very first time ever, actually, the city's 21, 2021 budget to the Government Finance Officers Association to be examined by a panel of independent reviewers. The panel evaluates the budget document against the guidelines and best practices established by the National Advisory Council on State and Local Budgeting, as well as the GFOA. Based on the evaluation, the GFOA has determined that we have met the criteria for the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. This award is the highest form of recognition in government budgeting and its attainment represents a significant achievement by the city. So we congratulate the Policy and Budget Department and I'm glad that we submitted this and we're very proud of having received this. Next slide, please. These are not, there we go, not in the same order that I have here, so bear with me. Yeah, I think so. If you could go back to the slide, there we go. Thank you very much. Our Human Resources Department, Westminster employees, you've heard earlier this evening many, many times, are the most important resource as they assist our community every day in all facets of service that we provide. The Human Resources Department this past year has worked with city leadership in providing the following support and services that were so imperative during this time. Number one, we maintain and preserve all jobs with no furloughs or layoffs. And I think importantly with that, we did support a selective hiring freeze to respond to the financial shortfalls we had. And the finance, the Human Resources Department was very instrumental in tracking budget savings for both pay and benefits. So we were mindful to the need to reduce costs and did it in a way that we didn't have to furlough or lay people off. Helped facilitate the retooling of those employees to provide needed services to the community during the pandemic. The folks that were collecting those checks continued to be busy. Their work just was a little different than it had been the previous year. The Human Resources Department provided virtual wellness services with a heavy focus on mental health support. And finally, they managed all of the legislative processes and changes for employees, including specific and new services, benefits and resources that came about as part of the pandemic. We really needed to spend in order to change our work rules and regulations and figure out a way to have people work from home virtually and yet at the same time maintaining workforce that was out on the streets. Next slide, please. Sustainability. The city's Sustainability Business Program that we've now called Sage, Save, Act, Grow, Earn, launched in April of 2021. Businesses were quick to take advantage of the program's resources, which ranged from grants to advising to assessments. One business in particular, Bestar, a property management company that has responsibility for the Orchard Town Center, acted not only as a participant but also as a partner. Bestar became an advocate for Sage and sustainability. For example, Bestar incentivized Sage participation and certification through the provision of a $300 marketing benefit to their tenants and is promoting a free energy assessment and rebate campaign organized by Sage and XL Energy. Bestar plans to partner with XL to install LED lights and all their outdoor fixtures. Bestar, along with the city, co-hosted just recently an electric vehicle ride and drive event. It is through partnerships and collaborative like, collaboratives like this that we can take a very important city program and illustrate it in a way that the business community can get engaged. And, you know, we're proud of this association with Bestar and thank them for having taken this program and made it, made it real in the business. Next slide, please. Under the Fire Department, Knox boxes are used by fire departments all over the country to gain access to buildings after hours in the cases of emergency. These boxes are small vaults installed in or near exterior portions of a building. Each fire department has a unique key to access all the boxes in their cities. Each box holds keys, key cards, or other access information for that specific building. Having these boxes saves the buildings from having sometimes extensive damage occur while fire departments have to enter to control an emergency, emergency situation around the block. With the new regional automatic fire responses that we have in North Denver, one of the challenges a fire department has is accessing a Knox box in another jurisdictions, in another agency's jurisdiction. With the cat-to-cat system we have now, Orton, North Metro, or Adams County engines can be dispatched to a fire emergency alarm in Westminster since they may be closer than our own fire department at any given point in time. When that unit arrives, the Knox box key will not work in a Westminster Knox box. A system needed to be developed to allow for multiple agencies to access all of these boxes. Westminster Fire Department took the lead in the region and initiated a program through the Knox Company to pursue new technology. This technology uses FOBS that can be programmed for jurisdictions to gain access to all Knox boxes in conjunction with other North Area agencies. Several grants were applied for and were gained. One of the concerns was the cost to local businesses to update each of their Knox boxes in the North Area with these new FOBS. The North Area was awarded a grant of $1.2 million to replace the cores in each North Area Knox box, thereby saving the local businesses from having to purchase these core units and providing access to the fire departments along regional jurisdictions. Next slide, please. In the fall of 2020, the Information Technology Department hired its first-ever database administrator. Thank you, Council, for approving that. This is also called a DBA. A DBA ensures databases run efficiently, that data is available to users, and that data is secure from unauthorized access. Strategic hire reduced the workload from several software engineers and software administrators while at the same time implemented best practices and standard procedures. This hire directly aligns with leadership priorities by achieving secure data and continuity of systems. The Community Development Block Grant Program, CVBG, is a program administered by our Economic Development Department, and it provides significant benefits to Westminster's residents by providing funding to preserve and expand affordable housing and complete infrastructure and streetscape improvements in certain low and moderate income areas of our city. One particular CVBG program, the Emergency and Essential Home Repair Program, provides grant funding for eligible Westminster residents to make essential home repairs that allow individuals to age in place. One recent example of this program involved a Westminster resident that was battling stage four cancer. When the city's contractor completed a site visit due to a reported electrical issue, it was determined that the house presented a high-risk electrical fire as a result of aging aluminum wiring infrastructure. The city's Emergency and Essential Home Repair Program provided all the funding needed to repair that dangerous wiring and allow that resident to remain in their home. The General Service Department has developed a very outstanding partnership with XL Energy. The city of Westminster has partnered with the goal of reducing emissions of ozone-forming pollutants and improving air quality through electronic vehicle adoption. This project includes three areas of focus with targets to achieve by the year 2025. First of all, cost-effective conversion of Westminster's own fleet to have more electric vehicles. Secondly, to increase access to charging stations at city facilities for residents and visitors. And third, to encourage the purchase of electric vehicles for private and commercial use in our city. In the Finance Department, utility billing representative Deanna and master technician Angelo went above and beyond to assist a customer who was busy helping with a sick family member and did not believe she had a leak. Upon further investigation of the home, there were in fact two leaking toilets. And if you've been involved in any of these calls, I was in one here a week or so ago where business in Westminster's water had gone up $1,400 in a month, and it was a leaking toilet. They made a call to me and actually I want to credit the Public Works Department for being out there within 10 hours or so and finding that problem. In this particular case, the person did not believe they had a leak, but they had two leaking toilets. The city team was able to resolve a leak and assist with keeping her bills from growing any further. Utility representative Amanda assisted an 88-year-old customer struggling to set up auto payments via paymenters. Amanda used her utility billing and IT knowledge of the system and successfully walked this customer through the necessary steps. You know, and as I mentioned, these are stories that happen all the time. It's just put a little, a name with them and personalize them a little bit. I hope you realize that what an outstanding job our folks do all the time. Not perfect, but I think a lot of care goes into the way we handle all these situations individually, person by person. In the Public Works and Utilities Department, in the spring of 2020, recognizing that the newly emergent COVID-19 pandemic was impacting our residents in many ways, the city began to offer utility customers a $50 grant towards their water bill when they demonstrated a financial impact from the, from the pandemic. And of course, you know, we didn't have a lot of regulations and rules with that and a lot of paperwork. If somebody claimed they had a problem, we took them at their word. During 2020 and continuing into 2021, the city's Water Bill Assistance Program Coordinator, Heather Sackett in particular, has worked with hundreds of city residents to help them apply for and receive this grant, which was increased to $100 at the end of 2020. Not only has Ms. Sackett worked with many of these customers directly to help them fill out the forms correctly, she has also been friendly and a helpful voice during a very difficult time for them. Comments from recipients have been overwhelmingly positive and many expressed sincere gratitude specifically to Ms. Sackett and the city for this program. At the end of June 2021, approximately 650 customers in total had received this grant since the program. In the Parks, Recreation and Libraries Department, on March 16, 2020, park wreck and library operations changed like no time in, in history. Recreation library services were completely closed. In the three months of complete facility closures, 90 PRL staff were redirected from their primary jobs to support over 1,700 shifts related to staff shortages due to the impact of COVID-19. So people in other parts of the agency, people from throughout the city that were off work during that time because of the pandemic. Within these 1,700 shifts, staff required new training in the following key areas. Work as trail ambassadors, parks and trails trash collection, seven-day-a-week park and rec employees working on a hotline to answer community calls, administrative support to our human services efforts in the community, and 45 recreation library employees benefited staff. And between 50 and 60 non-benefited staff were reassigned to parks, open space, and golf to support those operations. That was really important at that time because that continued to provide important leisure services to Westminster. Remember the days that we had of wanting to get those golf courses open as just as soon as we can and we couldn't do it early enough? But we couldn't have run the golf courses and provided the service that we needed to provide in the open space system during that time where it was really overwhelmed with use without repurposing librarians, recreation workers from other buildings. During this switch to other work, staff provided business community care calls of over 3,000 calls. Those were the calls that we made to businesses, asking them how we could help. Temperature checks for police, for police officers were conducted by this staff. Food pickup from the Food Bank of the Rockies for Growing Home, that was over 65 tons of food, and daily operational support at Growing Home. Transforming them to our adult center to support food distribution for Growing Home. And you recall piloting an autonomous vehicle that transported food from the Mac to Growing Home. And finally, the citywide front porch food drive that provided service to so many people. In community development, a new neighborhood assistance pilot program was launched this past year. The resident helped initially was a single older adult female who lacked the support and resources to address precarious situation with her fence. Road enforcement officer Anfield worked with her to address the fence to get it to property standards. After partnership on addressing those items, the staff served her as our first customer with the pilot program by facilitating the repair of the city's, with the city's abatement contract. The effort is to assist older, vulnerable adults attempting to remain in their homes. The effort is to assist older, vulnerable adults attempting to remain in their homes with relatively minor simple projects that address neighborhood concerns. And finally, my last story before a short video we have that gives, provides some feedback from other folks in the community. On February 1st, 2021, Detective Judy Greig was assigned a violent domestic violence kidnapping case which occurred in the city. The victim's ex-common law husband and father of her two children came to the residence and held her captive for around five hours. During this time, the suspect tied her up and physically assaulted her by burning with a lighter and cigarettes, cutting her numerous times with a box cutter. And I apologize with the detail on this, but I think to appreciate this, this is worth, worth talking about. And she'd been choked on a scale of nine to 10. During the time the victim was held captive, the suspect made her make videos and messages saying goodbye to their children. Fortunately, the victim in this case worked out a covert communication signal with a friend of hers to alert her if she was in danger by the suspect in this case. The suspect, unbeknownst to him, communicated the covert signal to the friend who responded to the resident, interrupting the suspect who fled, at which time she contacted the police, this was on February 4th. On February 26th, 2021, another incident occurred that was an assault on the female victim's brother who was there at the house with them. When this call was aired, Judy immediately recognized the address as belonging to her victim, at which time Judy and several detectives responded to assist. Judy immediately took the victim and escorted her to the PD, ensuring the victim was safe. Judy immediately contacted the school where the victim's daughters attended and placed them in a secure status until Westminster officers could safely transport them to the police department to be united with their mother. After this incident, the victim was placed by Judy in an undisclosed, undisclosed location as all indications were that the suspect was committed to locating and killing her. Judy talked to the victims and her daughter's family personally and ensured that every step was taken to keep them all safe. Judy Greig personally purchased dinner and some groceries for them until the victim advocates make more manageable arrangements. Judy purchased a cake and birthday presents with her own money in an effort to ensure the girls' birthdays were as special as possible. Judy also planned the family members to take any presents or other items to the girls for their birthday party. Judy spent every single day of the last nine weeks of this investigation, working on this case while still maintaining her other cases. Judy drafted numerous warrants to assist in the fugitive, fugitive apprehension efforts. To include numerous warrants she has never previously attempted, but was successful in getting approved. There is no doubt in anyone's mind that the suspect in this case is committed to locating and severely injuring and or killing the victim if he is not captured. Without question, Judy has personally and professionally invested in this case, has gone above and beyond, selflessly gave everything she did to, to this case and personified the values of our, of this, of her profession and of her city spirit values. These are just a few stories that happened in this city in the past year in multiple departments who provide service at different levels, it's a network that relies on each other. Services that are directly to a citizen don't happen without the finance and the human resource and the information technology and the sustainable city. And these folks all work together and do so very seamlessly and I'm really proud to work with all of them. And I would now like to turn to the next slide and you know, you can take a look at this for just a second while, I make some concluding comments and, and I would just say that we'll end with a little bit of a video, it's really an honor to be in this position. This is a challenging time in our community. We've gone through a series of issues in, in 20 and 21, we come out the back end of it in a really good financial position. I am proud to work with all of you, you care an awful lot about this city. You know, we're not necessarily always supposed to agree on everything, I work for you and I'll do everything I can to execute your policies and to support you. I honor and respect so much what each of you do, you don't have to do this, you didn't need to make a decision in your life that you come and take this job that pays almost nothing and requires an awful lot of you and puts you in harm's way. You know, we all from time to time are treated kind of poorly and people are upset with us and you especially. And I just honor so much the work that you do and I, I thank you for that service and our employees, I honor them and, and I'm so proud to work with all of them. So with that, Ryan, I'd like to see the video now if you can.
Market Night is a program in partnership with Senior Hub in the city of Westminster that provides boxes of food provided by the Food Bank of the Rockies as well as local restaurant gift cards to individuals that are in need during these difficult times. As a part of the city's response to COVID-19 and providing access to, to food and supporting our local restaurants as well.
It's my first time here and basically I drove up here about two o'clock and then it really stunned me to see so many cars both on one side of Sheridan and one side of 104 and how they just were in lines well before I'm sure this was even supposed to be started, so there definitely is a need here.
I think it's important to volunteer at events like this because it helps you to get out of your own little bubble, it helps you to see how you can help people in new ways.
We serve around eight to 900 people and with demand increasing, we're trying to keep up with those numbers.
To date, we have provided 9,400 local restaurant gift cards. We've done 8,600 boxes of food, 700 grocery gift cards and 800 hot meals that were provided on December 23rd.
We just need to be more unified so that we can build and lift each other up, that we can, can help each other feel more loved and feel more, more comforted in times of need. A lot of the people that we give food boxes to, they're just so appreciative, they're so, so grateful and so happy and like giving this food uplifts them a lot because it, it means that they, they have a means to eat at least one more week.
Thank you so much, City Manager Tripp. At this time, recognizing that we're going to have an opportunity to touch base with our employees, are there any comments or questions from council? I think that was well done, made me proud of the last year and of our employee team. See no comments or question? Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Spelling.
Yeah, I just, I really liked your approach this year, I'm just gonna say that. I love stories and I love to hear the stories of the city and how we're being successful, so just thank you for sharing that.
All right, see no other comments and questions, this concludes our post-meeting briefing.